Today is Tuesday, March 11, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to order. It is currently 6:02 PM. All board members present. We will have the land acknowledged now.
We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapuyia, who are represented by the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederated Tribes of the Soletz Indians. The relationship between the Kalapuyia people and this land continues unbroken to this day, and we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people.
Will you please join me in the prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
I don't believe there are any, and if I can just do a quick tech check on our audio.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Tech check, okay. Like, I think that our tech check is proving we have a problem.
Do we all need to check?
Oh, yours is talking.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Do we need to swap it?
Where's the mic? If the setting is applied to all, then... It might actually be this because we have a solution last time.
Yeah, it might actually be.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Ooh, there we go.
Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, there are none.
I will turn this portion of the agenda over to you, please.
Thank you very much. So, we are going to start with spotlights, and before I get going, I just want to remind everyone about the logistics, which is that when we call you, you'll come up to the podium to speak and be acknowledged. And then afterwards, we will meet at this lovely backdrop for photos. Okay. So, I am first going to call Carrie Litchfield, and she is going to present our community spotlight to some well-known people sitting with her.
Did we do a mic check here?
Check, check.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Director, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. I am honored to spotlight an extraordinary group of women whose dedication to service has created a profound impact in our community. Women Together, organized by Kathy McViness and Melinda Freshour, exemplifies the power of compassion, unity, and action. Most recently, Women Together brought warmth and joy to the students in our teen parent program by hosting a heartfelt holiday breakfast. These young parents were welcomed with a meal, thoughtful gifts, handmade blankets, hats, and baby booties crafted by a group member's 91-year-old grandmother. And the generosity extended even further with books and cozy pajamas for the babies and toddlers. The teen parents expressed deep gratitude, sharing that the program feels like a family, one that Women Together has lovingly embraced and supported. Beyond the holiday season, Women Together remains a pillar of encouragement and celebration for teen parents. In June, they organized the Butterfly Ceremony, a special event honoring the resilience and achievements of graduating teen parents. This meaningful ceremony symbolizes transformation, growth, and the unwavering support these young parents receive from the community. Women Together's impact extends to empowering young girls as well. Partnering with Howe Middle School, Women Together helped organize the first-ever You Go Girl event, where guest speakers spent the day inspiring young girls to pursue their dreams and cultivate self-love. This initiative left a lasting impression, reinforcing the importance of confidence and ambition in the next generation of women. As we celebrate Women's History Month, it is especially fitting to recognize this remarkable, the remarkable work of Women Together. Their commitment to uplifting those in need reaches far beyond schools. They partner, oh, they partner with organizations supporting homeless youth, such as Simply Birthdays, ensuring that children experiencing homelessness have the joy of a birthday celebration, complete with gifts and special moments. They also prepare welcome baskets for seniors at the 55-plus community, demonstrating that their kindness is limitless. Women Together is a testament to the power of collective goodwill, finding and addressing needs to make tangible differences in the lives of others. It is evident that they love this community, and we are grateful for their unwavering commitment to youth and families of Salem Kaiser.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and give applause to this group. And we'll celebrate you both even more when you come up, but thank you so much.
Did I do that wrong?
Um, no, no, it was perfect. Well, now with the curtsy, it was perfect. Thank you so much. All right, next, I would like to invite Erin Harada, our Communications Director, up for our staff spotlight.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Director, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. For our staff spotlight this evening, it's my pleasure to recognize our district's amazing team at Repro Graphics. They're kind of like hiding in the back row tonight, but we'll get them up there later for the picture. As a district, we are fortunate to have a talented team of in-house print and copy specialists, graphic designers, and distribution experts. This dedicated team supports our schools through a variety of services: managing large print orders, designing school newsletters and posters, creating helpful signage, printing the beautifully branded window coverings for our schools, and to the celebration of students everywhere, I'm sure, mailing home report cards. They are a one-stop shop for meeting our school and district print, design, and mailing needs. I want to recognize this group specifically for their can-do attitude, customer service, and the recent projects that they have helped with. Now, it is possible that I'm known to them by making these last-minute requests with high expectations and tight deadlines, and I should probably work on that someday. But nonetheless, this group has welcomed every opportunity we have offered them and delivered excellent results and products on time. Very specifically, I'd like to recognize this group for their work in printing and binding of our new success in Salem Kaiser publication. It's over here, I brought extras for later, to share. As you know, just a few weeks ago, we were planning for our first annual State of the District address and thought that would be the perfect opportunity to release the publication. It shares both stories and data related to our board priorities. We did our best to make sure that we submitted all the content we needed to to Repro Graphics on time so that they could do their part. And we were all on track, and then snow happened. We had a couple of snow days, which kind of set things back a little bit, and that was just right before our event, but the Repro Graphics team made it happen. So their commitment to excellence, even the face of unexpected challenges, is a testament to their professionalism and dedication to our schools. Whether they are designing, printing, or mailing, they do it all with precision and creativity and a genuine desire to support our students and staff. And so to the entire Repro Graphics team, thank you for your hard work, your positive attitude, your unwavering reliability. We are grateful for all that you do to keep our district running smoothly and looking its best.
I also feel both hopeful and confident that you did not print your own certificates. I think that that will be the case. And then finally, for our student spotlight, I would like to welcome Logan Four, who is both a campus safety specialist and a McKay Girls wrestling coach. And as you make your way here, I want to let everyone know that I was exhausted just watching you coach at the state championship event. It involved a lot of squatting and a lot of raising your arms up and down in great excitement, so...
A lot of yelling.
There was a lot of yelling. But we would love to hear about the very special and talented student that you're going to speak about tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. Tonight, we are honored to recognize an extraordinary student athlete whose dedication, perseverance, and leadership have left a lasting impact on our school and community. Sadie was not only, has not only excelled in wrestling, but has made history along the way. She completed her high school career with a perfect 35-0 senior season and an impressive overall record of 114-7. She is the first athlete in school history to achieve the remarkable titles of a four-time district champion, four-time state finalist, and two-time state champion. These accomplishments are a testament to her unwavering commitment, countless hours of training, and relentless pursuit of excellence. But Sadie's journey to success was not without challenges. She demonstrated immense resilience, pushing through injuries that might have sidelined others, and continuously seeking ways to improve. Her dedication took her beyond the walls of our school, often traveling to Portland for additional training to sharpen her skills. Sadie's commitment to her sport and her team was evident in the way she led by example: showing up early, staying late, and encouraging those around her to push past their own limits. She was not just a competitor, but a mentor, a role model, and an inspiration to her teammates and coaches alike. Beyond the wrestling mat, Sadie's influence has shaped the culture of our athletic program and our school as a whole. Her work ethic and determination have set a high standard, motivating younger athletes to believe in their potential and strive for their own success. She has proven that excellence is not just about winning titles, but about perseverance, humility, and lifting others up along the way. Sadie has also played a vital role in fostering inclusivity and belonging as a trailblazer in the wrestling program. She has broken barriers in a traditionally male-dominated sport, showing that anyone, regardless of background or gender, can achieve greatness through hard work and determination. She welcomed and supported teammates of all experience levels, creating an environment where every athlete felt valued, encouraged, and succeeded. Her leadership extended beyond competition, helping to build a program rooted in respect, camaraderie, and shared commitment. Sadie's legacy is one of excellence, resilience, and inspiration. She has not only elevated our wrestling program, but also strengthened our school community by embodying the values of dedication, perseverance, and leadership. Her story serves as a powerful reminder that success is not just measured in titles, but in the impact it leaves on others. Tonight, we celebrate Sadie for her remarkable achievements and the lasting contribution she has made. Please join me in congratulating her on an astounding high school career.
Thank you so much for that, Coach, and I will only add that you are really exciting to watch. So I didn't know girls wrestling was so fierce and so spectacular until this year, and it was really, really fun. So thank you for all of the excitement you gave everyone who has watched you wrestle this year. And with that, I think we will head over here for photos.
How do they work? I was so intrigued by them.
Now, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board Chair. So, once again, we see all the reasons we have to have just tremendous hope and pride in what happens every day in our district. And I also had extra reason to reflect on this today because we were part of an advocacy day at the State House, and we got a chance to speak with lawmakers about the tremendous work going on in our district. I feel that is especially poignant because this is also a day where, at a broader level, we are seeing the U.S. Department of Education staff cut by half in a single day. And the commitment I've made to you many times in private and also in public is that the position that I take on issues that are federal in nature are limited to things that impact our schools and our district. And things like the elimination or erasure of the U.S. Department of Education falls very squarely in that. The services that that department offers our community are substantial, and they are not easily replaced or transferred. And so tonight, for my superintendent's comments, what I want to talk about is actually the precious and important institution of public education. Because these changes that are happening around us are political in nature in some cases, but they are very much about the question of us as an institution and our value locally and on a broader level. And so tonight, I share something that I believe can hold many people together, which is a reminder that public education is one of the most important institutions we have. And there are things about that as an institution that are common amongst us. So first, I believe that most people believe that every student is deserving of opportunity and that that opportunity comes in public schools. We are the only institution that is open to everyone without exception. I believe most people can agree that public schools are the most powerful equalizer we have in our entire nation. This is true for my family and for many people here. If we look back, we realize it is true for our families as well. Public schools are that promise. I also believe that we can agree that we are a diverse nation. And public schools are where our kids go, and they learn how to be in a diverse society, how to flourish in a diverse society because they are with people who are both like them and unlike them. And that is a lifetime skill and a national asset. I believe that we can agree that all students deserve a sense of belonging and that public schools educate over 95% of American children. Public schools are where they go to find their people, young people and adults, to find their community and learn and discover who they want to be. And I believe that most of us can agree that if our public schools are not strong, our community is not strong. So for my comments tonight, I ask us to move under a common tent, which is a belief in schools. If we can't believe in schools together, then we are in serious moral disarray. But I don't think that's the case. I think we just need an opportunity to remember that we can become united around an institution, believe in an institution, trust in it, and invest in it. And with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you very much. Next, Deputy Superintendent Naves and High School Level Director Ramirez will provide a report on the graduation rate results policy and lead us through discussion.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Student Advisors, and Superintendent Castaneda. We are glad to be here today to share a report on our four-year graduation rate for 2024. I'm joined by Mr. Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools, who will help us to really tell the story of the efforts of our schools to ensure that all of our students graduate on time and ready for what's coming after high school.
Next slide.
So you are familiar with this slide. Each time we come with a monitoring report, we see one of these. And we can see in red, these are the goals that you set for us as a district for each year where we want to be on this particular indicator. And in blue, you can see our progress over the last three years. What you'll see is that the goal for 2024 was to have 81.3% of our students graduate within four years. And we were just under that, at 79.4%. And you can see that we are increasing. We increased 0.3 percentage points since 2023, but we're not there yet where we want to be, and we have some room to make up this year in 2025 as we head up to that next target of 83, 82.8%. So, not there yet, but you can see we've got some positive movement after a little bit of a dip the year before. All right, next slide. When we start to look at our demographic breakdowns, we see some really promising news in terms of our students' graduation rates. We can see that our American Indian, Alaskan Native, Black, African-American, and White students all graduated at higher rates in 2024 than in 2023. We also continue to see, and we've named this in some of our other board goals, that our students who are participating in career and technical education are not only outperforming our district average and the state average, but they are graduating at exceptionally high rates. So that's exciting, and we're continuing to get our students connected with career and technical education and to learn about what is working for those students in those programs. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the highlights that we saw this year in 2024, and then we'll dig into what our schools are doing to get these results and to continue to grow. Mr. Ramirez.
Good evening. As you can see on the slide, a great highlight for us is South Salem High School had an increase of 5.65%. The previous year, they had a little dip, so they're back above that 90 mark. Really excited to share that. And also, a nice increase there, as you can see, for North Salem High School at 4.63%. Five of our six comprehensive high schools are above the state average. And you can also see there the growth in students, Black, African-American students, 8.3% higher than the state. And students in foster care also increased 23%, as you can see on that. In talking to South Salem High School, just to dig a little deeper into the increase, they had a 13% increase in ELL students graduating. Really proud of that gain. In talking to the principal, it is obviously the support that they're providing. We're providing some team teaching, where a EL teacher will push in with maybe a math teacher or a language arts teacher to provide those language scaffolds and supports. And we've seen an increase in our student success, obviously leading to more students graduating. We also have an EL support person that looks at every grade level there and monitoring how well our students are doing and what interventions need to take place in order to support our students on a path towards graduation.
Thank you. We see a few specific efforts that our schools are implementing, and you heard them in that story from South Salem High School. One of the first ones is ensuring that we're doing everything we can to get students to have a strong start when they come to us in ninth grade. So we have ninth-grade team meetings where we're looking at student data and performance. We're understanding where students need additional support starting in ninth grade. We're prioritizing class sizes in ninth grade to have smaller class sizes so that students are getting more individualized support. And we're adding in additional supports after school and during Saturday school. We also start to look at, starting in ninth grade, how are students doing in their on-track data? And next month, we'll be back to talk about ninth grade on track. And we've created a dashboard that helps schools to really look at what are the trends they're seeing in each core class, in English Language Arts, in mathematics, in science, and social studies. in English Language Arts, in mathematics, in science, in social studies. And then also to look at different student groups and see are there any trends that we need to be responsive to. We're using that dashboard not only in ninth grade to look at how our students are doing, but also in all of the grade levels so that schools can put together teams for those other grade levels as well, provide those additional supports. Another area that our schools are working on is, and right now, this is part of what's happening as we are in the second half of the year, is what we call senior blitz, ensuring that we're providing wraparound services around any seniors who are in jeopardy of not graduating on time. This includes assigning students mentors who are doing additional check-ins with them, talking with them about their grade progress and what they need to do to graduate at the end of the year. The 12th grade team is meeting and making sure that we're looking at all of the data to develop plans for all of the seniors who are close but need an extra bit of support. Continuing with those after-school and Saturday school programs as well as credit recovery courses that are available during the school day and that will be available during the summer for students who need a little bit more time. And then finally, the last piece I want to highlight is the role of relationships. When we talked about those mentors for the seniors, one of the things we're looking at is how to expand that to students in 11th grade, 10th grade, and ninth grade to ensure that every student has their person who not only is helping to create that sense of belonging, but also monitoring individual students and their progress towards graduation. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Yes, Dr. Sandegrae.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you very much for this presentation. I just want a general question is, as board members, we connect with our community and our constituents, the families, et cetera. What is it that we can do so that we can kind of help the community and the families also help you push the car in the right direction and kind of close the gap so everybody can enter the finish line? Because we do connect with the community. We have different ways in which families talk to us, and we really want to kind of roll up our sleeves and be of help, not to leave the whole burden on your shoulders.
Yes, and now, thank you. Thank you for that question. I would say the constituents you're talking to, please have them communicate with the school. Obviously, we should be reaching out. We do reach out, but that communication with families and that partnership with families is going to help us to make a teacher-parent connection where we can be a support and let you know what exactly is it that your child needs to do to be successful in my class if I'm your teacher. So I think that communication is the biggest thing and that partnership, that we are together pulling your student to where we want them to be, and that's a graduate when their time comes.
I would add one other note just that's timely. Tomorrow and Thursday, we have parent-teacher conferences, so this is a critical time to ensure that our parents of high school students are getting out to the school, connecting with the teachers and counselors, finding out where their students are on their progress towards graduation, and ensuring that they're tapping into those additional supports that are available to help them graduate on time.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Carden.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the strategies that have been implemented. I know last year, when we got some of the information around my zone in South High, it was pretty alarming, and I think you're doing all of the right things. And you may have said this already, but are you implementing all those same strategies in all the comprehensive high schools? And are we able to do all those strategies in all the comprehensive?
It all has, as you're saying, it all has a little bit of context on every high school. There is definitely sharing in the information that we have and the strategies that have worked. When they do work like South, they'll connect with other schools and I'll direct them. This is where we, let's say someone was struggling a little bit in the EL. This is the model, this is what's worked. And again, you have to have context for your own building, but definitely there is a lot of sharing of what's working in your building.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the hard work.
Just to follow up, you know, sometimes we have communities from immigrant communities. We don't quite, the families don't quite understand how the schools work or language could be a barrier. But there are others who may be able to speak and understand how the system works. So the suggestion you made is important to get them to contact and about their children. But sometimes we do have in our, for example, temples, et cetera, we have, somebody will be like a volunteer, they can run some extra help or they help each other. So what, of course, there are some structural barriers if I try to go and talk about somebody else's kid, right? So are there some suggestions you have where the communities can get involved, like as a community organization? It doesn't have to be organized, either formal or informal, community groups or volunteers who can help tutor, mentor, or provide any extra help to get these kids through additional homework support or some other way? Any suggestions? Or are there people doing it where they can be connected or they can learn from each other?
Yes, there are opportunities, especially the first one that would come to mind would be like a Saturday school. Obviously, there's a process to have people, even volunteers. And to do that, there's definitely opportunities where we can use support for people that have that knowledge and can support students in certain subject matters. So yes.
Thank you very, very much. As our team takes their seat, I do just want to take this moment to recognize the school-based staff who work incredibly hard on this. It is an unrelenting focus for our high school teams. And, you know, I was recently at South talking to a graduation coach, and you could just tell that he was dialed in on every single student in his caseload, completely dialed in. And in the questions of what it takes, it takes that level of diligence and care and thoroughness, a total commitment on the part of our high school staff. Thank you.
It is now time for the public comment portion of the school board meeting. As a reminder, all audience members are subject to immediate removal if you engage in abusive, threatening, vulgar, or hate speech, including speech articulated on signs and clothing, which violates the district's harassment and our Every Student Belongs policy. Basically, we just want to have a very professional, kind, and loving environment in our board meetings. We provide an opportunity for public comment by virtual call-in, in person or in writing. Electronic mechanisms are used for translation. Each participant has three minutes. We have a countdown timer on screen for monitoring time. The timer counts down from three minutes. At 30 seconds, it turns from green to yellow, and at one second, it turns red and plays a short bell to signal time is up. Please be mindful of your pace for our interpreters. If the board receives written comment ahead of the meeting, the written comment will be posted on the district website. Tonight, 10 people signed up and have been selected to comment. Our first person is Jim Schepke.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, members of the board, student advisors, Superintendent Castaneda. I'm Jim Schepke, and I'm here representing the Yes for Salem Livability Campaign. And we're working to pass the Salem Livability Levy on March 20. And I'm a volunteer with that campaign. I'm not going to take three minutes of your time. I mostly want to just thank you for considering a ballot measure argument for the voters pamphlet. That's item 7C on your agenda tonight. As some of you know, I was the State Librarian of Oregon for 20 years. And in that role, I did everything I could to increase and improve what our 136 public libraries around the state do to foster a love of reading for all of Oregon's children. Today, our public libraries do so much for children, particularly in the area of early literacy, including our Salem Public Library. And I'm happy to see that your measure argument that you're going to consider tonight acknowledges that. We really fear that our Salem libraries may close if we don't pass the Livability Levy on May 20. So your support is highly valued. If we can pass the Salem Livability Levy, we'll be able to reopen our main library on Sundays, and that will be a tremendous benefit to children and students and families. That's sometimes the most popular day for a public library. We'll also be able to reopen our main library in the evening. And it's closed now at 6 o'clock, so that doesn't do students a whole lot of good. But we'll be able to reopen in the evenings at our main library. And the West Salem Library Branch hours will double if we can pass this levy. The levy will also just provide stable funding for our library for five years, and we won't have to worry about whether it might close. And maybe it's even time to figure out how to fund our library even better, because three years ago, we passed a bond measure here in Salem that has two branch libraries in it, one for Northeast Salem, very much needed, and one for South Salem, branches that can be closer to our students. We desperately need that. So if we can pass the Livability Levy and solve that problem, I hope we can move on to consider how we can expand our library, have these wonderful branch libraries to serve all our students. So thanks again so much for considering a measure argument, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jane Titchinall.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm giving comment today in support of renewing Andrea Castaneda's contract as Superintendent of Salem Kaiser School District. Over the past year, I've been a leader rise to the challenge, making tough but necessary decisions to keep our district moving forward. While many school districts in Oregon face budget and staff cuts this year, Salem Kaiser is one of the few that has remained stable, an achievement largely due to Superintendent Castaneda's leadership. She has navigated difficult conversations with transparency, strengthened connections with district staff, and has remained focused in upholding our district's values. Her commitment to clear, consistent communication, like the quarterly budget reports, for example, ensures our community understands how resources are allocated, building trust and accountability. More importantly, I witnessed her unwavering advocacy for our students. Whether speaking out for those impacted by federal policies or engaging more actively on social media to connect with families, she continues to put students first. Public education is the foundation of our democracy. Every student deserves access to quality learning opportunities that prepare them for the future. I'm grateful for the superintendent's leadership and the board's dedication to this mission. Lastly, I appreciate the board's support for the levy on the May ballot. Forty-one percent of Salem Kaiser students living in poverty, strong public resources like our libraries are more critical than ever. Our youth need safe, accessible spaces to learn, grow, and thrive. The decisions we make today will impact their futures forever. Thank you for your dedication to our students and our community.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Zopper-Reed.
Hear me okay? Awesome. Well, good afternoon, good evening. He's off here. Good evening, Superintendent Castaneda, Chair Ms. Richardson, always a pleasure, board, community members, student representatives, and directors. I wanted to take a moment to speak to something that holds a profound importance, not only in our district, but also in our broader community, our stance on immigration. First off, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to everyone past and present who had contributed to our efforts in creating a welcoming and supportive environment for all students and their families. Your dedication and vision have made a significant difference in many, many lives. As we know, immigration is a complex and multifaceted issue that affects countless families in our community. In Salem Kaiser, we have taken proactive steps to ensure that our policies promote an inclusive and equitable environment. This is not just about compliance with laws. It's about fostering an environment where every student feels safe, valued, and hopeful for their future. Our student approach to immigration, or our district approach to immigration, and one that embodies compassion and understanding, we have implemented programs that provide resources and support for immigrant families, helping them navigate the educational landscape and access essential services. By doing so, we not only ensured that our students receive the education that they deserve, but we also empowered families to become active participants. Sorry, there we go. Active participants in their children's learning and school community. It is essential to recognize that the districts around the state and even beyond are looking at us as a model for how to handle these pivotal issues. The work we are doing now here in Salem Kaiser serves as a blueprint for other districts to aspire to create similar systems of support. We are setting a standard. And for now, education can embrace the diverse backgrounds and experiences of our students and community that they can bring to our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Hoffert. Cindy Hoffert. Kimberly Reed-Zopper.
Good evening. We got a lot of thanks and kudos going around because student advisors, Chair Richardson, and board directors, thank you for volunteering to serve our community. That's a big job. And Superintendent Castaneda, thank you for answering my questions. Folks might not know it, but last year, I asked a lot of questions at these board meetings, and Superintendent Castaneda reached out in November, and we met to talk about my questions, and it was fabulous. Thank you. My name's Kimberly Reed-Zopper. I'm a teacher at Parish Middle School, and I'm speaking as an individual. So here we go again. Contract bargaining started last week for our teachers, nurses, therapists, counselors, behavior specialists, program associates. And if I missed anyone, I'm sure I'm going to hear about it later. And we're going to pick up again on Friday with a grueling bargaining session from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. But you should go. Really, our bargaining sessions are open to the public, and all of you volunteer sorts definitely qualify as public. You should come by, just drop in for a bit and see how it runs. Not necessarily from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., but a little while. I'd encourage you all to check in on the bargaining on your own to see and hear firsthand what the licensed employees in Salem Kaiser feel about this process and what we're looking for. And then, over the course of all those bargains and negotiations, you'll hear proposals about schedules, calendars, behavior policies, prep time, money. It's the same old, same old, right? Same things we always talk about. But as you check in on these bargaining sessions, keep in mind that these proposals are intended to contribute to improved student belonging, well-being. to improved student belonging, well-being, and academic success. So when you hear SIA's bargaining team speak about increasing the differential pay for certain positions that have additional duties and requirements, they're advocating for retention of key staff who serve our students. When you hear the bargaining team speak about class size at any level, they're advocating for our students to have sufficient access to educators and receive the attention that they need. When you hear SIA's bargaining team speak about increasing and protecting in-service days and prep time, they're advocating for time to meaningfully assess students' progress, to plan for their needs, to prepare engaging and culturally relevant instruction, communicate with families, and collaborate with colleagues to better meet our students' needs. So... Can I have three seconds? It might sound like we're expecting a lot. It's because our students need a lot, and they deserve a lot. So as we walk down this bargaining road, just remember that those proposals are nothing less and nothing more than what we feel we need to give our students the education that they deserve.
Hillary Rothenberger. Hillary Rothenberger. Maria Young.
Hello, Board. My name is Maria Young, and I'm a community member and an advocate. I grew up in Salem Kaiser. I went to Mary Air and Hock in North Salem. And I'm here today to demand that we stop using the yonder pouches. I think that $213,000 is a lot of money, up to a million, to spend on blocking families from being able to communicate during a time when we have immersed immense stress around our immigration and ICE agents coming in. And I believe that the students of Salem Kaiser, the youth that are involved in these situations, need to have communication with their families. And when you look into the stress levels that that can cause on a child who's trying to learn and trying to get their education and worrying about whether or not they're going to come home to not knowing where a family member is. I believe that the money that is, it's taken from SIA, the Student Investment Account, that that money is meant to be used in equitable ways. And if we're not seeing that amongst, if it's not being equitable amongst all of our youth and students, then it should be something that should be stopped. And I personally will have a middle schooler next year, and I would like him to have his phone. But I also believe that our youth deserve to feel safe and insecure while they're at school and while they're trying to learn. And so I believe that these pouches are a Band-Aid to a bigger problem, which is mental health. And I've seen Luis Latinos Unido Siempre behind me advocate for over five years now for more counselors, for more therapists, for more things that they can use in order to feel safe and secure within their schools. And I've seen them advocate for that, and it's not happened. So I would like, in my opinion, and as a community member and an advocate for the youth, I would like to see that money be used in areas where they can actually feel safe at school instead of being in fear. Thank you.
Felix May.
Hello, can everyone hear me? My name is Felix May, and I'm a Salem community member, voter, and a parent. While I understand why board members may have thought that yonder pouches are a good idea to increase student focus and lessen the burden of teachers who have to regulate cellphone use, I think it's an overly simplistic and ineffective solution. Yonder pouches have not been proven to positively affect outcomes for students in any measurable way. And for students who rely on communication to stay safe, they have a hugely negative impact on their mental health. Students who have loved ones that are at risk of immigration enforcement are obviously top of the list, but the implementation of yonder pouches would affect all students. Children should be able-
Excuse me. I'm going to ask you to slow down for our interpreters, okay?
I'm so sorry. I haven't spoken at one of these before, so... Sorry. Do you want me to go back a little? Okay. Children should be able to contact their families during an emergency if they need help or if they don't feel safe for some reason, and that includes at school. I do not think yonder pouches should be used by Salem Kaiser School District, and I think the money from this program should be reinvested into programs that functionally support students. Thank you so much.
Julian Mesa.
Hello? Can you guys hear me? Dear Salem Kaiser School District Superintendent Andrea Castenya, School Board Chair Cynthia Richardson, and other school board members, Latinos Unidos Siempre, community and faith leader and organization, request your immediate action to divest funds from yonder pouches programs in Salem Kaiser School District and reinvest in resources that promote the well-being of immigrant students. Salem Kaiser School District has invested nearly $1 million in education funds from the Student Investment Account. SIA is meant to promote equity and better access to education and historical underrepresented students. However, with the investments in yonder pouches, Salem Kaiser School District is promoting toxic stress among immigrant students. The yonder pouches program is creating social, mental, emotional, and physical risk for immigrant students who are enduring the impacts of increasing immigration enforcement in our community. Yonder pouches have cut communication between students, community resources, and loved ones during school hours. Students cannot report ICE activity with trusted organizations or check in on their family when they are feeling anxious. Students cannot rely on school staff or administration to communicate with family members in relation to immigrant issues. Reporting the fear of family deportation to school staff would require that the students disclose their family's immigration status. This disclosure creates an immediate risk to the students and their family. We also know that based on research, there are little to no conclusive evidence that the cellphone bans like yonder pouches improve academic performance, mental health, and well-being, or reduce cyberbullying. Yet, the threat of deportation and increased rates of racial profiling and xenophobia do have profound impacts on mental health of students and their families. We also ask you strongly consider how yonder pouches are promoting punitive education. Students report having to pass through daily security checkpoints and weapon detection, plus the removal of personal property through the use of cellphone pouches. Students being searched and questioned without apparent consent for the suspicion of holding phones in their pockets or bags. This is clear violation of student privacy and violation of trust between students, educators, and administrators. We look forward to seeing or hearing about your immediate response to implement changes that promote the emotional and physical safety of underrepresented immigrant students. In solidarity, all community organizations and community members below.
Our organizations in support Centro de Servicios para Campesinos, Troy, Oregon, Latino Network, Capaces Leadership Institute, Indigenous Now, Center for Popular Democracy, American Friends Service Community. As of March 11, 2025, 425 community members in support.
Leo M.
Hey, my na- hey, my name is Leo. I am in the fourth shade. I demand so yonder pouches do not remove some Salem Salem public suits. Yonder pouches are causing students to detourse it and violent. Documented and immigrant parents. So so some might be forcing students and immigrants. Immigrant families. And you community. Is stool. Yonder pouches will loan. Letting though us suits staff and without proof that yonder pouches work. Youth should be able to use their phone to retold any ICE in their suits. Students should be not be forced to use yonder pouches. Instead all youth should have smaller class sizes. More counselors and resource funds. I man that I demand the end of surveillance and harm caused to immigrants. Family of the community.
I'd like to thank everyone that participated in our public comment section of our board meeting. At this time, we will take a 10-minute break. Please return by 7:15. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the twenty-four twenty-five superintendent evaluation. The Salem Kaiser Public Schools Board of Directors has completed the twenty-two forty-five evaluation for Superintendent Castaneda reflecting her performance from July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The evaluation in line with district policy and her contract is based on three key areas. Academic achievement results, executive limitations, and the OSBA leadership standards. At the superintendent's request, the majority of her evaluation is based on student outcomes and the board results policies. I'm gonna read that one more time. At the superintendent's request, the majority of her evaluation is based on student outcomes and the board results policies. Superintendent Castaneda has demonstrated strong leadership, effectively managing district challenges, including finances and union negotiations, while maintaining transparent communication and fostering an inclusive, goal-focused environment. Her make decision-making skills and ability to remain calm under pressure highlight her leadership qualities. The board recommends continued proactive communication and collaboration with the board to ensure transparent and effective leadership dynamic moving forward. We commend her for her bold leadership in facing the district's challenges and for her success in building strong community relationships and creating a clear vision for the future of the district. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-four twenty-five superintendent evaluation?
Chair, I would like to move that we approve the twenty-four twenty-five superintendent evaluation.
It's been moved by Director Pressy. I need a second, please.
A second then?
It's been seconded by Director Cottingham. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Please raise your hands and I will call on you. Yes, Director Pressy?
I just wanna reiterate, you know, we said it privately, but I also wanna make sure that we say it publicly that I, we do commend all the hard work that you've done, that you you came into a very difficult situation and faced it head-on and helped us all face it head-on. Uh, and I really appreciate that. And um, I was reminding uh, some of my colleagues of something pithy that I learned about this last weekend. That is just how we hold accountability and um, you know, we're holding you accountable to all the goals and standards that we set. But that doesn't mean that you're not also accountable for the good things. We always view accountability sometimes with a negative connotation, but we're also accountable for the good things. And those good things are all the amazing things that our students get to experience. Um, the, the little gathering that you were able to put together of the board cheering on Kaden during um, the a cappella concert and um, just all the other amazing things that folks get to see you do every day. So, thank you.
Director Sandegir?
Thank you Superintendent Castaneda. Uh, thank you Chair for letting me share. Boy, 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 you have changed the direction. It's almost like changing the direction of a huge aircraft carrier, nuclear-powered aircraft carrier. So, and then kind of lining up everything. Uh, and uh, I really appreciate all that you have done. Thank you so much. Uh, you know, you're a good teacher. At least I learned quite a lot from you and sitting in the one-to-one. Probably I've spent more time talking to a superintendent than ever in the six years' time. I really appreciate all that because it kind of helps me process in my head and understand. Uh, you, you have been, I, I wouldn't quite say it's like a radical transparency, but the level of transparency has been very, very helpful, very important. Not only for me, even when, when I do like walk in the street, people talk about end fund balance. Now, I didn't even know that word existed. So, that's the level of, you're like a teacher for the whole guru, for the whole town. I think that is important because superintendent is not only for the school, it is for the entire community. For us, community, school, all these are all one and the same. So, you're an amazing leader and we are so blessed to have you. And uh, for me to have this little experience. And you faced issues head-on. You moved towards the problem rather than away from the problem because there is a natural tendency for, and you head-on and you come up with solutions, you can have dealt with it. So, it has been a wonderful laying down the ground. Now, we are in a takeoff point. That's where if community, families, teachers, staff, and board directors and students, if everybody can push the car in the same direction, we are in for a bright future. That's how I see it. The takeoff point is an important point in every organization. When you clean up, line up, and then you're ready to take off. And I think that's how we will close that gap. The fact that you wanted sixty percent of the evaluation to be based on scores, that is pretty gutsy and bold. Because normally, that's not the way most people say, this is how you please evaluate me. That also shows that you are willing to take on challenges and come up with ways to approach it. And so, it is a pleasure to see you, how you think, how you operate, and to see the changes. And we are all going in a good direction. Thank you for being here for us, our children.
Director Harnish?
Uh, yes, I just wanna say my uh, personal gratitude to you for your leadership. Um, and I have, it's been an honor to uh, be here for this last year and uh, work alongside you and uh, the board uh, to guide through some pretty challenging times. And I so much admire your ability to lead not only with the head, but also, and probably more importantly, with the heart. And I am confident that we will weather any storm because of your leadership. So, thank you for all you do.
Director Crissy?
It's okay. I, I just, um. It's okay, okay. I just, I, I do agree with that. I've, I've told you um, since the beginning, I appreciate your strength and your endurance and your courage. And you did take a big uh, quite, quite a job. And you, and you took it in head-on. And as I shared with public, you're, you're always working. You're seven days a week, you're always working towards a goal. Um, I understand that you um, will, um, I, I'll, I'm very interested and excited and to watch and see what happens next with this district. Um, so, and what plans you've got moving forward. Of course, I always wanna see more focus on um, on our children and teaching, but I, I, I guess it's, it's something that uh, again, we got ourselves in prior to your visit here, and it's gonna take a while to get out of. So, it'll be interesting to see how you continue to maneuver. Thanks for being tough behind your guys.
Director Cottingham?
Um, I just wanna add thank you um, to the superintendent for your leadership. I think as our director, you know, Osprey talked about, you came into a very challenging environment as a first-time superintendent, and you've led with grace and um, been you know, a model for others across the state and country in really, really challenging times. And I think you are the leader for this moment, for our district, and I hope not just for this moment, but for a long time. Um, I think it's really also amazing the team that you've been able to build um, and getting to know them and all of the work that's been happening as you've had the time and space to build that team. And I know you're gonna continue to do great things.
It's hard to add to all the things that have been shared, but I wanna echo thanks for your leadership Superintendent Castaneda. Thanks for choosing Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Um, for your all courage, for always speaking with honesty, even when it's news that is hard for us to hear, right? We've, we've spent a lot of time talking about budget, and we've looked at some of our academic improvements and areas of opportunity. And, and that's not always easy to share. It's hard. But you always do it with um, with gen- genuine care and intent to work hard on making things better and um, and bringing us all along. And for that, I'm thankful. I think it's hard. Um, thanks for always communicating with care and integrity and commitment to our students. We see that every day and even um, any, anywhere we go, right? I think there's, there's that sentiment of, there's lines of communication and that is so important. And, and it can be hard sometimes to keep that when there's a lot of noise and a lot of media always happening, and you've been successful at it. So, thanks. Excited for, to continue working with you and collaborating with you. It's, it's just really great to have you. And may you, may you wanna continue to be with us for quite a while.
Uh, as a, as, from a student perspective, uh, you know, it's just really amazing to know that we have a superintendent who, who actually like cares about what, what who actually like cares about what students in her district are doing. I mean, you showed that. You showed that all the time by going to events. I always see it on your Instagram. Always just supporting and then, of course, coming to my acapella concerts. I appreciate it a lot. And it just really, really feels good to know that like the leader of our district just cares about all of the students.
Yeah, okay. So, genuinely just adding to what Kayden has said, I feel like once you start following the superintendent on Instagram, you do really see how she spends her weekends or like, I don't know, I would call it like her like, like her five to nine after her nine to five. And it's still just here at schools, at schools, in school events. I'm like genuinely impressed and sometimes I'm like, "You can take a rest day. It's okay. We know that you support our students. Our students know that." Although like they love you attending the events. Although I haven't seen you at an orchestra concert yet. But, regardless, definitely what Kayden said, we know that you care. Like at least definitely with us being student advisors, like doing the like, we do like student advisor check-ins. I feel like that's not something that I've been able to like experience in other like different kinds of leadership roles like that. And I feel like it's really beneficial in being able to just use this position to its, to the greatest extent.
Superintendent Castaneda, words cannot express the most outstanding job that you've done for this district. You came in in a very courageous manner. You have undertaken our district finances. If it had have been me, I'd have gone out the door. But anyway, you took it on. You advocated. And you were also partially responsible for that message getting to the Governor and her creating the bill that she has created to increase funding. Like I said, words can't express. You lead with your heart. You go 24/7, never stop, always wanting to do more, always doing more. You are so smart. And you teach us like Sadia said. You don't assume that we know. You teach us and you bring us along with you. It was so courageous of you to use the rubric that we use to evaluate you by. You held yourself accountable for our students' academic achievement. That was very courageous, very courageous. I wanted to give you 100% anyway that I followed the rules for a change. You should be so proud of what you've accomplished. I know that we are proud. And like I said in the other room and everybody dared me to say it.
Yes, say it.
You are better than homemade cornbread, girl. Yes, you are.
Now they can print it in the news.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you have done and all that you continue to do. I think we'll vote before we let you speak. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I meant to say aye. I'm sorry.
Unanimous on the ayes. Your contract evaluation has been approved.
I want to stand up.
Yes, we do. Next is the superintendent contract extension.
Chair Richardson, I'm sorry. I'm not clear on the last vote. Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. As noted in the meeting materials, the superintendent's current contract is for a three-year period from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026. The superintendent is in year two of that contract. The contract states that after the evaluation and no later than March 15th, 2025, the Board will decide upon renewal or extension of the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion to approve the extension of the superintendent's contract for three years, 2025 through 2028?
Yes, Chair.
It has been moved by Director Sandegary. Need a second? Been seconded by Director Harnish. I didn't finish reading, but anyway. And delegate authority to the Board Chair to enter into contract negotiations for a new three-year contract beginning July 2nd. So, we have who made the motion. Dr. Sandegary. It was seconded by Director Lisa Harnish. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Director Pressy?
Just coming off of the cocktails of the celebration from our evaluation, I'm really excited to see you in this role for another three years. And I'll definitely want to stay in touch. Well, I mean, I will because my kid still goes to this district. But just connected to see all the great things that you do, leading this, the second-largest school district in Oregon. Just kind of want to make sure that we marinate in that. It's a big job. And I'm really glad that we found you to step in to lead us and look forward to seeing you for the next three years. So, yeah, thank you.
Dr. Sandegary?
I look forward to, at least in my next two years, to see you and work with you. You know, one of the question I asked during the, when you first interviewed was, please help us kind of bring everybody together, put the Humpty Dumpty back together, like something to that effect. And I really appreciate all this foundational work you have put in place. So, I'm confident that moving forward, it will, you will be able to get all the stakeholders, everybody, to kind of align them in a way that really benefits all our children. That I am confident that we are in the right time to take off and get that accomplished. So, just an ask from my side, simply on behalf of our communities.
Thank you. All right.
Super briefly, I, you know, I think I just want to underline how important these actions tonight are, right? The evaluation and the, you know, moving forward here hopefully with an extension of the contract. As the Board, we have essentially three pools, right? It's the policy work, it's the budget review and approval, and it is the hiring and overseeing our superintendent. And I remember bringing, you know, when we were doing interviews for superintendent and whatnot, and I lost some sleep because it felt extremely stressful. And I continue to say that in my short career, right? In my short lifespan, bringing you on as superintendent, Superintendent Castaneda, has been one of the greatest responsibilities and it is one that I am quite proud of because you get to lead our students and our educators today. But we know that those impacts are to be seen and felt for a generation. And I hope that we can continue to honor that as a Board by supporting your contract extension here. So, I will be supporting. Know that.
No pressure.
All those in favor of approving the extension of the superintendent's contract for three years and delegating authority to the Board Chair to enter into contract negotiations, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? One opposition. Yes.
I just had a question. We all, you know, have been doing that Oregon Government Ethics Commission training. And maybe our council can answer this, but it seemed like the training was saying that we have to announce the vote of each person on the record. Is that true or is it okay for Ashley to just document in the minutes?
Ashley and I looked this up and it's about the minutes. So, so long as Ashley has a clear record from this, then it is sufficient to not have the separate will-call vote.
Okay, thank you. Because they were very clear in the training that it is not on Ashley or the superintendent or you as our council that we are responsible. So, I was like, oh! So, thank you for that clarification.
Did you get it in the minutes? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Chair?
I just want to offer really two comments. The first is that when I applied to this job, and some of you will remember this, I told you that this was the only job I was applying for, which was absolutely true. And the second is that this work is entirely about a team, entirely about a team. And so, while we have everyone sitting here, I also just ask that you imagine every principal, every assistant principal, every director, every instructional assistant, every teacher. There's almost 6,000 people doing this work. And it is just with extreme humility and even more joy that I get to be part of this community, the only one that I want to be part of.
Thank you very much. On May 20th, local voters will vote on a five-year local option tax starting July 1st, 2025, aimed at supporting the city's parks, recreation, libraries, and Center 50-plus senior center. If passed, this measure would cost property owners 98 cents per $1,000 of assessed property value. If passed, the funds directly support public libraries, public parks and programs, including playgrounds, ball fields, trails, and splash pads. Recreation services such as youth programs and operations and programs at the Center 50-plus for seniors. Do I have a motion to approve the measure argument in favor of the City of Salem operating levy as presented?
I will make that motion.
It's moved by Director Cottingham. And seconded by?
Director Harnish.
Director Harnish. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion.
Sorry. I, again, just want to remind everybody of our public comment earlier about just the importance of a library. And as someone who grew up going to our Salem Public Library here, because I didn't know the one in West Salem existed when I lived in West Salem. But it's really, it's really interesting because I have a little sister and we're almost a little under a decade apart. And so, it's weird seeing her relationship with the library be different from mine. Because for mine, I felt like I could pop by anytime, like we'd be driving past and be like, "Oh, we have your books in the car. Let's just go return them." And for my mom, it's like, "Oh, we have to schedule a time to go to the library because it's not open with more freely a time." Or about two years ago or last year, around the same time of year, I would go to the library after school to study for finals. And my whole group would go every single Thursday after school and we would reserve like the teen center room. And now, because it closes at 6:00, we don't do that anymore. And we either FaceTime or we just don't get together because it's just the way it works. But it's specifically time out libraries. It's so much more than a library. It's not just a wall with books on it. Like, there's a printer in the teen center. Like, I was able to play Mario Kart one time, which like isn't productive, but it was really cool. And if you really think about it, it would tie in with your district goals for third-grade literacy, especially as my sister is in third grade. And as a normal third grader, she gets bored of stuff very easily. And so, the two books that the school allows you to check out is great. But for her, who she's a very like hands-on, her mind is constantly moving. She'll like pick it up, read a little bit, and be like, "I have to move." And so, having the library gives her access to more books and to have more options available at home. And then with like our splash pads, I live very close to a splash pad. And there's like one pool here in like all of Salem. And there's like some like little individual pools that you have to like wait on a waitlist for like a million years and then pay a lot of money to get on. That just isn't an affordable or realistic process. And so, splash pads and Riverfront provides a great opportunity for kids over our three months of sunshine.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Sandegary?
Well, thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, there is no doubt in my mind that having well-maintained libraries, clean and safe cities, and good parks has been very important for our community and all our children. This proposal will add about roughly less than $100 for every $1,000 of property, assessed property value. So, $300,000 will be about $300, right? You know, we really thought hard about it and started asking, "Is this the only way to achieve this?" We need good libraries. We need good parks. And then started saying, you know, there are tough times everywhere for families. I believe that if by endorsing this and if we get voted down, what are the impact it will have on the Board's credibility as people of the city have repeatedly said no? Whether it is payroll tax or something like this? When do we kind of respect the will of the people? Here are some ways in which I was thinking, could we salvage this? There's about $1.6 billion worth of property in Salem, yet no property tax we can collect from that. And with the measures, ballot measure five, I believe, and 50, there's a cap. So, I think it's not really fair to push it on people who are already struggling financially to say, "We're going to add $300 more for a kind of a small-size, mid-size home." And, you know, then they started questioning, "Why are people voted it down?" Perhaps they are struggling with financially. Or there is some work that Salem City should do, like maybe like what we did when we were facing budgetary problem. Perhaps they should have more transparency in the process of bringing different sections of a community together to have some shared goals which will make people contribute this, even during financial times. You know, when the city decides to revise the budget shortfall from $17 million to $13 million, it kind of gives people some pause in saying, "What is going on? Is there another way they could take a look at their budget?" There is no doubt our state loves to tax. I'm hearing that there is soon going to be some kind of tax on car tires and things like that. It'll keep getting added. How much can we shake down families and say, "Keep paying up"? We have to explore a little bit more sustainable things like state paying us. If they really believe in equity, there has to be an equitable way of allocating more general fund to Salem, which is city-state capital. And so, by next year or so, we will have to go to public for bond. We have done a good job. Our Board did a wonderful job of being accountable. We worked hard. We made some structural changes, fiscal changes. It was painful, but it was very difficult, but we went through that. I have not seen such exercise being undertaken by the City of Salem. When we go to public and ask for bond money, we'll have to be, people shouldn't look at us and say, "You know, you endorsed this levy." But we didn't see any structural changes, reforms. Or, so, we shouldn't lose our ability to gain public trust in order for our own bond, which is really necessary. By next year or so, we may be going for that. So, that's the reason I have to really... So that's the reason I have to really pause and think, what is in the best interest of our 40,000 students, our 6,000 employees, and our school districts? While I believe it's important to have safe streets, good library, I am a little hesitant to support this without clearly understanding what real reforms has the city undertaken or they have started some good thing. They've got a new city manager. And I am very confident with the new city manager and they changed the mayor. But we want to see some changes in place before I can publicly endorse such a levy without and this doesn't seem to have an end point in this levy. This looks like an open-ended. And while we are not holding the state accountable to pay the bills for a massive amount of property they are sitting in the city-state capital. So I don't want to put more burden on the community. This is quite a big bond. It's like a roughly a dollar for every $1,000. So they have to do some work and see and at least regain the confidence of the community. And we have to also respect the will of the public. When public has said no, there has to be a good reason why they said no to the payroll tax and everything else before that. Thank you. So I will not be supporting this the way it is written because I'm really think focusing on the interest of our school district's ability to go to the public and say, this is the way the money should come. We can provide library. Maybe we can open our school library a little extra or school building a little extra after evening for children to stay and use the building facilities. Thank you.
Director Pressey?
Thank you, Chair. A year ago, almost to the day, our community and specifically our district was rattled by the news of losing the life of one of our students. Ever since then, our city has pledged to work on violence reduction and specifically on supporting youth here in Salem to have alternatives from participating in activities that are not beneficial to their health and well-being. How are our youth supposed to be able to find those alternatives if they don't have access to a free, safe, and secure space? I really appreciate the efforts and work that our community members have been undertaking. But oftentimes, you know, similar to how our student advisor Sophia mentioned, access to those spaces are costly and time-consuming. There's wait lists. I know that the YMCA does great work. I know that Boys and Girls Club does great work. I know that the Croc Center does great work. But that's not always accessible to our families. And it's not something that our students can just access kind of at the drop of a hat. So not being able to invest in a space like the public library with a teen center, not being able to invest in splash pads just for our kids to be able to go outside and play, does a great disservice and is actually, I would even argue, almost entirely counterintuitive to the change that we want to see. How are we expecting our youth to be able to make any changes when we're taking away all of those opportunities? I have students that just ride the bus because they can. They will just start from one end of the route and ride it all the way around because they have nothing else to do. So that's why I so strongly support this bond measure. And I really hope that the voters will also see that it is a crucial piece to make sure that our youth have the safety and well-being that they deserve and that many of us got to grow up with. Thank you.
Yes, Director Cunningham.
I also support us putting this statement into the voters pamphlet on behalf of the entire board for the reasons that are listed in the statement. But I think it ties directly to our goals as a school board. As Sophia mentioned, third grade reading is one of our top goals. You know, attendance is one of our top goals, graduation rates, another. And as other board members have already pointed out, when you have access to safe public spaces, we know that all of those things improve. We know that public libraries are important to early literacy. And we also know that our parks are important for kids who are already involved in sports or want to be involved in sports. Kids that are involved in sports attend school more frequently. To me, there's a direct correlation to the work we do on this school board and the district and having additional public spaces, just like we have public schools, public parks, and public libraries are part of the total package that's needed in our community to make sure everyone thrives. It's a very nominal amount, I think, being proposed by city council. These types of levies have been used for, I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Shepke could tell us, but many, many, many years to fund things like public libraries and parks in our community. That's how we've chosen to fund things in Oregon. I think we also know that city council has done a pretty comprehensive deep dive into their budget. And it's gone on for, I think, at least two years, maybe longer, looking for any waste in the budget, pulling together city business leaders to be a second or third look to see, is there waste that we can pull out of the budget, get rid of to fund these types of things? And the city business leaders came back and said, nope, there's nothing more there. You know, I just think at this moment, we have what I'm seeing in the media and by watching city council and statements from our brand-new mayor, there's very broad support on a bipartisan front. This is a nonpartisan issue. And I think it directly ties to our goals. And I really hope that everyone will join together to put this succinct statement in support of the measure in the voters pamphlet.
Director Hudson?
So I agree with quite a bit, 100% of what was said up here. Of some of the words, I agree with 100%. I want to be clear. I want to share a perspective with you that I think some my primary job, I spend, I spend over 40 hours a week talking to families from all walks of life that cannot keep on their electricity. They can hardly feed their children. This is true all day long. These are the stories I have. And I can actually tell you my own personal story, but I'll spare you. But I am so thankful that there are people that can afford this hit, but there are an immense amount. We know that as a district. That's why we struggle financially, right? We, we have the free lunch and the food program because we have such a poverty level in our school district, which I understand is abnormal from other districts. So I don't, I understand where this endorsement is going overall from our board. However, again, opportunity for perspective because a lot of those folks would end up, they would look at you privileged. But personally, I'm very thankful and grateful that, again, that there are people and families that are doing well enough that physically don't see that hit because it would and should hopefully in the future and hopefully near future, this would not be such a hit. Of course, of course, we want a library. Of course, we want all of these things. We have to be more inventive about where we put, pull this money from. Otherwise, we're going to always have these same conversations. So thank you. I will be voting against it. I appreciate you.
All those in favor of approving the measure argument in favor of the City of Salem operating levy as presented, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Aye. I oppose.
Two oppositions. Did you get those? Okay. At this point, the motion moved, is approved. Thank you. On May 20th, local voters will vote on a ballot measure supporting Chameca the Community College. If passed, the proposal would maintain the current tax rate of 27 cents per $1,000 of excess property value with the current tax expiring in June 2026. This means no increase in the tax rate for property owners. If passed, the funds from this bond measure will support expansion of career and technical education, a new trade center focused on high-demand building trades, facility improvements, and enhanced campus safety. Do I have a motion to approve the measure argument in favor of the Chameca the Community College bond as presented?
Yes, Chair.
Dr. Sanjagiri moves. Any seconds?
Two seconds. Okay, I can't do both. Two seconds.
Director Artese seconded. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Director Sanjagiri?
Thank you very much, Chair. Now, I am in support of career technical education, especially preparing our children to be the future. We need all hands on the deck. And just in our own school experience, we have found that by adding career focus, it literally closes, I mean, you know, takes the trajectory up, almost like 100% of our children graduate. We need cradle-to-career pipelines to especially high-demand jobs and to make sure we are all, our children are productive citizens. This is a small investment, and they have not asked for anything more. They have managed their budget very well. This is a small investment with high return. And they have done a phenomenal job. And we really need pipeline. I wish we could also start CTE, Career Technical Pipeline, starting from middle school even earlier and get through and through all the way. Community College has also been very helpful for our children, Salem Kaiser. There's some who go in for early college. And I have personally toured that program. Oh, my God, everybody is so positive, so enthusiastic. They have almost got the whole college classes while they are still in high school. Now, this is an investment that is worth investing, which has directly demonstrated a clear return on investment. And I will be supporting this wholeheartedly as we have to prepare our children for the real world in our nation, as we are kind of making this pivoting towards the possibility that is ahead of them. And it's also preparing them for the real-world jobs. So I will support this. It's a good investment, and I urge our Salem to vote in for favor of this.
Any more discussion? Yes, Director Pressey?
Thank you. I'm fully cognizant of the impact that bonds and levies have on our community, particularly in also the kinds of communities that I serve. I agree that we need to be more creative in the way we find solutions. And one of the ways that we can be creative in finding solutions, and this is my personal recommendation as a board, we do pass property tax abatements. To Director Tronagiri's point, there is a bucket of money of folks that are currently not paying property taxes at all. And I don't believe that that should stand, especially in a situation where we're so financially constrained. We should not have developers coming in and exempting themselves from property taxes to make our city a better place and making our schools also more developed in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hudson?
You can speak first, Karina, if you want to. Okay. That's, you know, I actually feel that we should be focusing on schools and the discussion of our school. I believe in both of these things that they, the topics themselves and what they serve as our community and our students and children and even teachers is very important. But honestly, I'm not sure why we are voting on those bonds and those different things all the time as, as the board and the student body, as far as those buildings went, Maria, that you mentioned. But yeah, I just, I just, yeah, I'll still be voting nay. Not that I don't believe in the cause. I just, I just don't feel that it's our place to be voting and endorsing on, on all of these things that come across our lap necessarily when we have people hurting.
Chair, can I just have a follow-up?
Yes.
It's because we're the largest taxing entity. So I mean, like we, we're one of the ones that like draw down like the most amount of taxes. So we would need to be able to pass a property tax abatement. That's again, like falling back into the way that the system's set up. And if we want to modify that, then that's also another conversation.
Thanks. I comprehend what you're saying. I'm going to vote this way. I appreciate that we get to have discussion. This is very helpful and very, speaking of teaching, right? Community, everyone has their own thoughts. So, but anyway, so, so that's, that's neat and good. But I, yeah, I hope soon that we'll just be able to afford these more. And I apologize for coming back because I don't know what else I can say.
Director Artese?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be supporting this measure argument, I had to find the language, as well. You know, I, I hear and agree, right? In terms of some of the, the impact, of course, that can be felt by property owners and folks paying into our taxes. And I think this is where I tend to live in the gray and recognize that it's not either or, right? And on the other side of this is the improvement of livability and the improvement of access to resources and supports for our entire community. The, the truth is that as a district and as board members, you know, we don't live in a vacuum. And we're all interconnected, just as we are interconnected as humans, we're interconnected as systems in this community. And so I see this as an opportunity to support what is that cradle-to-career trajectory, right? Thinking about how mothers and young people and parents have places that are free of cost and accessible to raise their children. And, right, I can think back to being a child, a, a young mother of a, you know, three-year-old and our walks to the park and all of the free resources that we had in community that were at no cost. And being a Chameca the Community student myself, right? And what opportunity that provided me to have access to an education at very low cost. And, and then moving forward, you know, with other options. And so for me, this is an opportunity to, again, support that cradle-to-career trajectory, recognizing that we are interconnected and that this successive one, successive one is really the success of us all.
Thank you. Sophia?
I, again, just wanted to, I don't know, I guess, provide student perspective because I guess that's why I'm here, as a student advisor. And just highlight how, like Director Guzmanorti said, how it's, how our schools are so interconnected with the Chameca the Community College. Like I have some friends and I personally have taken like online, they offer free online classes to high schoolers to be able to get like extra credit or like higher math levels. And so I have some friends that went out of their way to take like an extra online math class. And now they, that's one less class that they have to spend hundreds of dollars in college to just, out of like basic requirements. And with things like, with things like that and just like the different programs that they help host or that they interact with. And they do so many other things, like I'm pretty sure that's where they hosted like O-Deck, like just driving lessons. Like they just do so much for such a fraction of the cost. And they're really an amazing, we have a really great community college, which many other places can't say the same. And so I know that, I just really appreciate having that option, especially for high school students who are looking to get higher education without committing to a college that they feel will take a lot of money to go to and to be able to stay close to home while receiving that higher education. I think it's a, just a great choice to have and to support and remember how it just helps support our students that will eventually get to that stage.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Sanjagiri?
There is another reason to support Community College because, you know, just like Sophia was saying, it costs less. You know, even before the pandemic, nearly 60% of our first-year freshmen in university You know, even before the pandemic, nearly 60% of our first-year freshmen in university were spending their tuition dollars or grant for remediation education. That's essentially trying to catch up what they should have been learning in high school. It doesn't count towards college graduation. So having a highest quality community college and community college succeeding is probably the best way to make sure when they go to university, they're spending their dollars for university. Otherwise, there are a lot of children who are from families of poverty, et cetera. They're not, their grant runs out and they are dropping out with a student loan in hand. The second thing is if you're very serious about closing the disparities, historic disparity, racial disparity, and any other vulnerable community's disparity, we really need to make sure that they have the career training or career technical education, especially with the jobs of the future, high, you know, earning potential, cutting-edge potential. And this is perhaps the quickest and the best way to cut through the years and/or centuries of disparities and get them at the level playing field and close all the disparity measures, wealth gap, opportunity gap, et cetera. That's the reason I think we should really invest on career technical education, kind of find a way to scale it up through and through from elementary, middle, all the way to college level. And if we can find a way to get, because right now, I believe about 43% or so, maybe last when I checked, of our high school students are connected, and they do very well. And if we can find a way through and through, we are going to do very well, and this is an investment that I urge our community to please support. They are a small organization. They don't have the time to put in for any door-to-door campaigning, et cetera, to get people to understand the nuances of why it is important and support this measure. I hope whoever is watching this get the word out to media, if they can help get the word out, saying why this is important, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Director Cardenham?
Just quickly, for all the reasons that my colleagues have already stated, I too will be supporting us putting this measure statement into the voter's pamphlet in support of Shemeketa Community College and just everything I've seen whenever I've gotten to meet with people there and talk to their leadership and the stories I've heard from student success across our region. It really is a true gem in our community, and I'm happy to support this measure going in the ballot pamphlet. Voter pamphlet, thank you.
Thank you. Director Harnish?
Yes, I am very excited to be in support of this for all the reasons that have been said. But I think what is really important for us to hold center is, like, this is our community, and schools are a part of it, our libraries are a part of it. I know that was the previous action, so I don't want to conflate the two, but also our community colleges. And I, I am excited that we, as a board, are putting forward this measure statement that is saying from us as a board, not as the district, but the board itself is standing on the importance of centering community, the whole community, not just our pre-K to 12 programs, but it's, it's about making sure that we've got a better environment for all. I think it also probably should go on record that no, no school dollars, no public dollars are being spent on these measure statements. This is something that the board is taking forward and moving forward with, just so that we have that really clear on the record.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the measure argument in favor of the Shemeketa Community College Bund, raise your hand and say aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Director Hudson opposes. So the motion moves. Thank you. This brings us to our consent calendar portion of the agenda. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do wish to provide brief review, and what I would like to briefly just pull up is the recognition that it is National Support Professionals Week through the proclamation. We actually have already celebrated this, but I will celebrate it through a very, very short story. I was at Highland the other day, and when I came in through the front door, the office manager and the office staff were greeting every family. They knew everyone that was there. Fast forward through a little bit of the morning, it was picture day, and our support staff were, they knew the fancy backgrounds that all the kids had chosen. They were making sure their hair looked perfect. They were doing all of the things to make picture day, what many of us remember from our elementary years. And on that same day, there was a young man who had a very difficult day. And I was talking to the instructional assistant who was supporting him, and he was pretty escalated. And the instructional assistant said, "I am so proud of him. He's having a hard time right now, but he has grown so much this year. And I am so excited to see where he's going to be at the end of this year." And there are so many ways to see an eight-year-old when he or she is escalated, but what this instructional assistant saw was the heart of this eight-year-old and all of his growth. And it is just an honor and a privilege to recognize the support staff who make our schools run.
I agree. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Yes, Director Pressey?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It was moved by Director Pressey, seconded by Director Harnish. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. Nothing was pulled. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is there a second? We got that. So at this time, we will vote on the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It moved unanimously. Thank you. As a reminder, everything in the information standard reports section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
That takes us to our board reports section of the agendas where directors and student advisors share work from formal committee assignments and activities of the board related to youth programs and school district activities since the last board meeting. Want to start with you, Sophia?
I know that we just went over the number nine information slash standard reports section, and Kayden and I kind of got reached out by Robert Sarwell, who was very much panicking as his, he has immense passion in the CET program or CTE program, CET program. And I am, was, we were just very happy to hear that whatever was happening just got solved and that it will be running for its full five weeks and 50 classes and supporting over 200 of our students. And I'm just very happy as I have, personally, I have three friends that are going to be working and running in the program, and they will be getting to have theater experience that they were never able to have in school because of the, like, lack of classes and their schedules being full and all that. And so I'm just very happy to hear that all of that got solved, and I didn't have to say anything about it. So that was very cool. And Kayden, I'm going to pass it to you.
I feel like every time I do a board report, I always say something about music, but I'm very, very passionate about our district's music department. So I'd like to highlight recently Scott Sappela went to Los Angeles, competed at Laugh, the Los Angeles Acapella Festival. That was a blast. There was a lot of workshops. Everybody in the group learned a lot. I know West Salem's Soundscape, they just went to Los Angeles as well, competing in ICHSA semifinals. I know they had a blast from the pictures I've seen online. And then also, I believe this was before the last board meeting, but I wasn't there, so I'd still like to highlight it, the All-City Choir, I got the privilege to be involved in and participate in, and it was just such a blast. And the concert, it was amazing. I'm not sure if any of you were able to make it, but the performance, it was great. I know a lot of people, just very educational.
Actually, just checking my calendar, because like Kayden, I always forget when it comes to things like this or when it comes to making our rounds, but I was also gone the previous meeting. I didn't know that we were both gone. That's kind of funny, but I was gone because our business, our business program, Sprague's Deca, or our, oh my gosh, South's Deca Program, Sprague's Deca Program, and recently McNary's new Deca program that started this year. We all went to Jansen Beach up in Portland to compete at our, just like, state qualifying competition, I guess you would call it. And so that was a lot of fun, and I, yeah. We had a lot of students that were working very hard, and as we have more and more people competing, the competition gets more difficult, and so I think this was a year that a lot of students, including myself, really got to see that it's not just because you've been in the program for three years that means that you're good. Like, you genuinely do have to work and push yourself to make sure that your project and presentation and everything is to the level that you want it to be. And I just was personally able to work with a lot of freshmen that worked really, really hard on their projects, and I, everyone was just so proud of them because they're all just, they're so sweet. And shout out to McNary to getting six people to go to the ICDC competition their first year, which is really impressive. It took South, well, back in like 20 something, like 22 years ago or something, it took a couple of years to get our first few qualifying, but they're going on a leadership academy. But shout out to them for doing that.
Director Pressey?
I was not able to attend the SCATS meeting this past month, so I don't have anything to report there. The only thing I will say is that y'all's absence at the last meeting was definitely felt, and you were sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Cardenham?
I was able to meet with one of the leaders in the district for our school nurses, and I just, just a quick shout out, probably more to come, on health-related topics. But she shared with me just what people are facing in schools, and I think we heard a lot about that last year during our budget process, but it's incredible what our school nurses are doing every single day to help students have all of their health needs met, both within the buildings and getting them connected to outside healthcare providers and mental health providers. And I just think it's incredible work and want them to know how much I appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Artis?
It's felt like a very long month. It's felt like a very long year. Was it earlier this week? It was last week. Got to join, stepped in for Director Ino Josprese at the Midway Valley Council of Governments Annual Dinner, correct? It was last week, okay. So that was a joy. I got to see Jonathan, who was there. I think TJ was there as well. I don't know that we saw each other. Maybe, maybe not. No, no, not TJ, okay. A lot of new faces. I guess there was that to it, too, but it was great to kind of get to connect with other folks from different local, I lost my word. I was looking for government. Thank you. Local government leaders. I also recently went to interact with one of the clubs, and I'm, was there Latino or Hispanic? Can't recall exactly their club over at West Salem, which was just great, you know? I think always just opportunity to connect with youth and to share a little bit of my own story, but more than anything, hear from them in terms of how they're doing and what their needs are and how, what their experience in school is, and just like I love having Kayden and Sophia here, right, to hear from your experiences, it's always really lovely to connect with other youth in community around how they're experiencing our schools, and I think it just helps give us a different perspective and how our work threads to the experiences of folks in our buildings. And that's as much as I can recall right now. Thank you, Chair.
Director Hudson?
Just, I'll try to be quick. I just appreciate any opportunity. I love seeing the kids from all the schools. Just their, their social media presence boasting, you know, how well they did and things that they've done, just showing up to games and music events, just the passion coming out of them. And I know I say this every time, but it's, it's just the best. And so, and also, though, I have to, I always get a kick out of the, the staff over at McNary New Way. They just had the Staff Student Senior Basketball Game, and they always have so much fun and look forward to that annual tradition. So I think it's always silly, and I think it's a neat thing that we carry that on, so thanks.
Director Sanjagiri?
Well, thank you very much, Chair. Superintendent Castaneda, thank you for solving that Children's Education Theater. That's really an amazing program, I believe. My son went to that, and, you know, it's, and I appreciate that. The second thing I just want to thank and shout out to, I mean, you know, I really appreciate that state of school address, and I specifically want to thank KSLM Radio for allowing me to share that in their radio station about our board goals, what's the importance of sense of belonging, third grade reading, ninth grade on track, and four-year graduation, and the importance of attendance, and your state of school present, that speech and the day and the presentation. And it is really, I want to say thank you to KSLM because they give me an opportunity to come once a month and get the word out because we all work during the day job. We don't have time to go around and meet different community members. So any freebie we get, I'd like to take advantage of it. And so, thank you, and thank you to the listeners because they have given, they really engage, and they give good rate information and feedback. That's why they keep calling me, I guess, once a month. And you give me lots of material to talk during those radio shows, so I appreciate all these topics that we gather here. It just lets me kind of scale it up to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harnish?
Yes, while not under official board capacity, I did attend yesterday to the Industry Advisory Committee of CTECH's Behavioral Health and Human Services, and it is an honor to be connected with this group, even just in tiny bits, but we should be, and I know we are, so incredibly proud of this program and what they've accomplished in two years and already planning for next year. They're doing internships out in community and also in other schools. They are giving back to the community. They are becoming endorsed in a variety of different assessments and tools that they can take right into the workforce. I know that there is one individual who just received a scholarship to the Ballmer Institute or was accepted, excuse me, I don't know what the scholarship level is, and another got a full ride to U of O. And I know that's just the beginning because we're just in the graduation season or just about ready to head into that. So it's an honor to see that, that program just soar.
Thank you. I was honored to be able to go to the McKay Black History Program. It was outstanding. The music was beautiful. All of the students that participated did an awesome job. Mr. Tim Kendell, who works at McKay High School, has done that program for 10 years, and he was awarded a plaque for his work. We also awarded a plaque to Benny Williams, the former NAACP president for 10 years, Bishop Wade Harris for all of the things he's doing for our students and parents in the community with transitional housing, foster care. He's doing a warming center. And Greg Peterson was acknowledged for all the work he's doing with the Be Black organization. He's purchased a lot of books and has been distributing books to our students. The next thing I did was went to Wright Elementary School, was Read Across America Month. I went to Wright Elementary. I went to Wright Elementary School. I was invited by Katie Carey. She was one of my former students at McKay High School when I was principal there. When I walked into her room, on her screen, she had our graduation picture, me giving her Dipoloma years ago. And the kids say, "You don't look like that anymore." Like, "No, I don't. It's been a, it's been a little while." But anyway, I want to thank Katie for inviting me to come and read to her students. It was wonderful. And I also read to two other classes while I was there. I just loved it. I started to just go all the way up and down the hallways, but I didn't. It was awesome, awesome, awesome. I also want to congratulate two people who work really hard to help our students and families in all kind of manners. We had the First Citizen event this past weekend. Ronnie Brooks, who worked at McKay High School, was announced as the distinguished, he received the Distinguished Service Award. And Greg Peterson, who is with the Be Black Foundation, who is a partner with our district in helping us provide additional supports for our students and our families as well. He was named the First Citizen for Salem. It was a great, great event. Over 500 people there. So it was awesome. And I think that's my activities and events for the month. It is currently 8:34. This meeting is dismissed.